Didn't you ever say?
Same thing to that.
We're on record.
Rent the house. But the office is empty.
We're on record.
Oh, okay. You insist.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Township of Persipony Troy Hills Board of Adjustment. Today is July 9th, 2025, and it's 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call. Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Ms. DeCros.
Here.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Yep.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Present.
Chairwoman Greggiani.
Here.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Present.
Our board engineer, Mr. Lemanowicz.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Do you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution of our home.
Mr. Chadwick, can we raise your right hand?
I swear to God.
Swear or affirm that any testimony that he's about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on something other than what is on our agenda this evening? I see none. Okay. Resolutions. Application 2416 Zaire, those who can vote are Berkowitz, DeCros, Jaskiewicz, Petty, Ready, and Greggiani can have a motion.
So moved. Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCros.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Greggiani.
Yes.
Our second resolution this evening is application 2327328 Kingston LLC. It's a resolution to withdraw the application. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCros.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Greggiani.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill, would you like to come forward, please?
Thank you. Good evening. I believe Chick-fil-A was originally on for this evening, application for sign. While we mailed the notices out, the notice was published. It was published in a wrong newspaper. So for that reason, I would like to adjourn that to July 23rd without further notice except for the publication notice, which we've already.
We need a motion for that.
Need a motion for that.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
You're all in, or are all doing all in there?
What? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. O'Neill, July 23rd. We'll see you.
Thank you very much. Do you want to do anything with your other application? Waiting to confirm witness availability. Great.
Okay. Thank you. Application 2519 Alberto and Kim Lojo, 33 Schiler Street, block 723, lot 4, zone R3, a C variance to construct an in-ground pool, patio around pool, and pool equipment on a concrete pad contrary to section 430-35, column 13. Good evening.
Raise your right hands, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. Can you state your names and spell your last names, please?
Kimberly Leho, L-I-J-O.
Alberto Leho, L-I-J-O.
Great. Thanks. Now just tell the board what it is that you'd like to do.
So we bought the house as it is with a lot of paper block and driveway space, but our original intention was always to put an in-ground pool in. My husband is a retired police officer, not a first responder, who unfortunately contracted MS shortly before he retired. And his mobility is severely restricted. As you can see, we don't have very many plans to travel and a lot of the use of the pool would be therapeutic. We did deal extensively with the pool boss, who is our contractor, regarding the distance, the size setbacks. We have next to our property, what we've been told is a paper road. It's an extension of colonial terrace that extends towards West Creek. It's not a used property. It's not paved. We have been maintaining it at our own expense, cutting the grass, picking up the branches because the town does not maintain it. But we tried to honor the setback as if it was an actual road. So we scaled the size of the pool down. We shoved it to the far corner. Legal definition of what size we're allowed to have. We scaled down to as minimal amount of patio as we could possibly get and still be able to get to the pool and pool equipment. We're destroying the shed. We're removing a concrete slab in front of that shed. We're using an existing concrete slab that's already on our property for the pool equipment to minimize how much more we would have to pave or cut into the property.
Was the removal of the concrete considered when they were doing the calculation for the impervious coverage?
Yes, it was.
So that's net out?
Yes.
Okay.
But you're still showing over the impervious coverage.
Correct.
And you saw the engineer's letter?
Yes.
And you are agreeing with doing whatever is required to you according to this letter?
Yes. We actually, we changed the plans three times with the pool boss to try to maintain as much of the respect to property barriers and zoning as we possibly could. If I had something else I could tear out, I would, but I really, unless I rip off a driveway, I don't have any more space to give.
Have you approached the town about vacating that paper street that you maintain now? Because if you got off that street, you wouldn't be here.
Yeah.
If, I'm sorry?
You can ask the township to vacate that.
Oh, we did. Not only once, but I actually did three times.
Okay.
I submitted paperwork. The only thing on that property is a large concrete drain, storm drain pipe that runs under the very edge of our land. I gave, I offered, my brother's a lawyer for.
Yeah, so you put an easement. Go ahead.
I offered an environmental impact that I wouldn't build on the land. I just wanted to fence it in. I would allow an easement anytime land needed to be accessed. But the reality is that concrete pipe was under the road in New York City, run over by trucks. It'd be 100 years before it ever fractured. But we did ask multiple times. We were denied. I came back with options, alternatives, almost begging to take over the land.
And I doubt that, sorry.
Anyway, you brought it up and they have, they have not tried to do it.
We were told no twice. I mean, if there was anything else I could ever give to take the land, I would, because we really did want.
All right. So you made, you made the effort to rectify these variants.
Yes, I did. If we had it, I wouldn't need the variants.
Yes, understood. Good.
Are there any questions?
The pavers. What's between the pavers? Anything?
No, it's, it's the, the front block is paved around the house. There's a large patio with a stone fireplace in the back. And then the, there was an addition of a three-season room. It's unheated, on air-conditioned. And then on the other side of the three-season room is a slab, a concrete slab that has air conditioning equipment on it. And that's where we're going to put the pool equipment.
Okay.
But any, exists, any of the paver is decided what was already there when we bought the house.
Right, but it's not solid, is it? That, I mean?
No, it, right, it's just pavers.
All right, so. You put a hose on it, the water will go down through it?
Yeah. Yes, through the drainage.
That's the issue.
Yes.
There's a shed shown in this paper street. Is it there?
That's the small shed to the left side of the property is our shed. It was there when we moved in and we never bothered relocated. I didn't even know it wasn't on our property.
All right, all right.
Do we have any questions from the board? So that's, that's right over there. Would you like to speak on anything else or your testimony is complete?
Please. I, like I said, a lot of it's therapeutic and just giving another reason to have people over, but as we won't really be able to travel very much.
Chair, have a question, please.
Mr. Lemanowicz?
Yes.
Please.
Just a question. Off the, the pool is close to the side, your side property.
Yes, to my.
Now, the plans show that there's going to be grading and such on the neighboring property.
Yes, we submitted for soil movement and my contractor told me that to, there is a very low point that leads down towards the creek. There's no reason for it being there. It just happens to be dipped in. That is one-third our next door neighbors and two-thirds on our property. I was told that we would have to have his property surveyed with topography and all of that, all of that contingency to have permission to level it up.
And that's what I'm getting at, because this, this application shows work on the property. That's not part of the application. So, Mr. Johnson, I'm not sure how we handle that. I mean, the board cannot grant this applicant permission to go on the neighbor's property.
Well, we had an alternative of not doing anything with that and building a retaining wall.
Yeah, because if you go look at it, what he did, his land, his yard used to slope down, so he's got a wall.
We wouldn't.
And flattened out his.
Right.
I understand the premise. My issue is that, you know.
We wouldn't need to raise it at the point where the pool would be. We would not need to raise that piece of sloped land to put the pool in. The pool's, the land slopes. Where the back of the large shed is, is where the land begins to slope down. It does not slope before that.
Is that the shed you're removing?
Yes. So I was assured that the pool would sit with, off of the appropriate distance off of that property line. And we would not need to level it up.
So you don't need to level on your neighbor's property.
No, we do not.
To put the pool in.
Correct. And if they decided that we did, we knew we had to get permission to do so with the proper permits, topography, and a, basically get all of the engineering documents that we got for our property for the neighbor's property at our expense. But we don't need to level it up to put the pool in. I was told that the setback of the pool would not be affected by that.
Have you talked to your neighbor about your, the plans that you had drawn up?
Yes, I've had extensive conversations with neighbors on both sides before we even contracted, and neither one had a concern about the pool.
Who's the neighbor of the property that you show grading work being done on? Know that that's part of?
Pete and Ashley, for the listeners. Yes, I have talked to him about whether or not it would be okay with him. And he said that it would be fine, but I understand that's like, I don't just need his permission to do it.
Okay, but you understand Mr. Lemanowicz's point, that we can't get, grant you an application on the condition that you do grading work on your neighbor's property, because we, we can't give you that permission. Do you understand that?
I understand. I do understand.
But your point is, I believe, that you could install the pool as shown on the plans without doing the grading anyways.
Correct. That was what I was told by pool boss. And they looked at our application. They helped us prepare to submit it. We didn't just submit it on our own.
Mr. Crouch, you had a question?
The attorney asked the question I was going to ask.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on the testimony that this family has given? I see none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak approval of this application or deny this application? I see none. Would one of the board members please like to frame?
I think it's a good application. I think it's for good use. And you spoke to the engineer and you agreed to do what he wants done. You spoke to your neighbors and they're not opposed, so I'll be voting for it.
Thank you.
Application 25:19 Alberto and Kim Lojo, 33 Schiler Street, block 723, lot 4, zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to construct an in-ground pool, patio around pool and pool equipment on a concrete pad contrary to section 430-35, column 13, and agreeing to the list from the town engineer. Second, ready?
Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCros.
I would only like to say, Mr. Attorney, do we have to state that if they decide to, you know, do the topography the way, and they have to go on the neighbor's property, should we put it in the resolution that, you know, how, how would we do that?
They have to come back.
Yeah, but I think we should, we should add it in that we heard it. We, you know, we are directing them. If they're going to do that, then they would have to come back.
I can add that to the resolution.
Yeah, just to be, to cover, to cover you and cover us.
No, I'll admit.
Right. Right. No, it's only to protect both sides.
Correct.
I can add that.
Okay. I, I vote yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Greggiani.
Yes.
Your application is approved and you will be receiving a letter. And at that time, you'll go to the zoning board and ask for your construction permits.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Lots of luck.
I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Searge issue.
Searge issue. Application 25:23 Searge issue, 58 Seasons Lane Drive, block 14, lot 17, point 65, zone A-HD-2, a C variance to construct an open deck with two landings and two sets of stairs contrary to section 430-10I and section 430-35, column 13. Please.
And can you pronounce your last name?
Please.
Searge, it's a Greek, like Antigone. So it's a long name, but the college used to call me Searge. Searge.
All right, okay.
So we call you Searge, okay?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great. State your name and spell your last name.
Antigone Searge, S-E-R-G-H-I-D-A-U.
Oh, D-O-U.
Yeah. The agenda is spelled wrong. Okay, that makes more sense.
Okay, tell the board what it is that you'd like to do.
All right. I have an existing deck. I bought the house 21 years ago. And at that time, with building the house and the extras, we couldn't afford to come to the board and get a bigger deck. So at that time, we did a 10 by 10. That's how much we were allowed to build. And we built that. Now, 13 years after, and knowing that I have no access from my kitchen to the backyard, we decided it's a good time for us. Plus, now we have five grandkids, 14 to 19. We cannot even have them over for a vacuum. So my request is to build a new deck, a bigger deck, 13 by 25, with railing and steps going down to the backyard. In case of an emergency, let's say in the kitchen, I have to run all the way to the front, or I have to exit through the back, which I don't have access to my backyard. Because the current deck that we have, it's so old, it's coming apart. My husband has problems with his health. I cannot make him every two, three years to power wash it and stain it. So we like to enjoy our property for family gatherings. But important is an emergency exit from the kitchen, which our builder never put anything for us to go to the backyard.
What's under the deck right now?
I'm sorry?
What is under the deck that you have?
It's nothing. It's empty.
So it's, it's dirt?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. It's not pavers?
No, no, no.
It's just dirt?
If you see the last pictures on my application, you're going to see both my neighbors. They have paddocks and whatever furniture. That's not my intent. My intent is to have a deck that can put a table and a grill, so my grandkids come and enjoy spending time with us. Because every time they come, we only have two chairs and a small table and a grill, and I send them in the dining room to eat.
So did you, did you see the letter from the engineer?
I was going to say that.
One letter from the engineer?
We have a letter dated, excuse me.
That's okay.
Letter dated May 14th from our engineering department.
That was when I built the 10 by 10.
No.
No, this is 25, 2025.
On the, on May 14th, yeah.
That's very important that you get a copy of this and read it.
Okay.
Because there, the issue you have is that you're creating more impervious coverage, which means there's nowhere for the board to go. So they are coming up with what you might need to do, which could be expensive. And I don't, the, the board takes that very seriously when we're looking to approve something like this. So if you haven't seen this letter, you should definitely read it, but you might want to get some expertise to let you know about what the cost would be before we go through this.
Okay. My, the deck I'm proposing to build is 13 feet above ground. Because you come inside my house, and by the time you get to the end, there is this drop. And nobody can build behind me, behind.
Yes, but it's not really about that necessarily.
Okay.
Right?
It's about drainage?
Yes. So the, the engineer is raising this as the issue, and he's giving us guidance. And he's saying, if you, if you want to just take a look at that, he's, it's a process.
I have an, actually, I have an extra.
So, yeah. Here you go.
No, I won't say no, so.
Okay.
Maybe the, the board has had a number of these cases where the over and the coverage, which is drainage, these are relatively small lots. Everything's pretty close together. So if somebody makes a mistake and's got water running off, it causes problems. You may have everything in your favor, but the best thing to do is to carry this application. You personally go make an appointment with the engineer. He'll explain each of the paragraphs. Whether or not he will offer an estimate of what you're getting into costs, I don't know. But if you take notes, you can go call up an engineer, figure out what it is, because you don't want to get it over your head. I assume the picture is here to show the type of deck you want to build.
Yeah, and the engineer is Justin Lisa?
Right. Talk to Nora, Nora can get you tied up with it.
And make sure you tell the engineer that you're not intending to build anything on the ground underneath the deck.
I'm not.
Like pavers or anything like that.
I am surprised, though.
Because the picture that is shown here shows it all paved under the deck.
Those are her neighbors.
Right.
Yeah, those are my neighbors.
But this is the kind of deck that you want to build, correct?
Yes, the one with the white railing.
Yep.
But not, not to have anything on the bottom.
Okay, all right. Just go to the, make an appointment with the engineer, and he'll get back with you, rewriting what's.
So.
How you, how you, because what could happen is you, you're going to meet with the engineer. Let's say if you didn't meet with the engineer and you said, yes, I'm going to do everything they want. It could be 10,000, 20,000, who knows what it is. And we're going to grant that approval on the basis that you're going to agree to do what he wants done. You, it's better off to go see what he wants done. You could explain yourself better to him, and some of these issues might not be a real issue.
So I can also get an engineer to do the topography before I go and see?
No, don't do anything.
No?
No. Or just sit down with him. The township has topographic maps, so that he'll know what it looks like.
I'm sorry to say, but it's a total surprise to us. Because my whole neighborhood has these sized decks, entertaining on the bottom, the top of the decks. And here I am.
You want to do the same thing?
Yes, of course, you know.
But they got.
My grandkids must be.
You don't listen. You have to listen.
Yes.
Whether they got permits for all of those decks or not is irrelevant. They have them. Town engineer would know it. Take a few pictures with you so they can see. And.
And I have.
And you sit down with them and get this resolved, so the board doesn't take an action saying, subject to the town engineer's report, and you find out the drainage improvements cost twice what the deck is. You're not going to want to be happy with that. So.
No, no, you know, it's like we say.
So why don't you ask the board to stay this and find out when you can get back on the deck.
We'll give you another date. Nora, may we have a date to carry this, please?
I can get you on August 6th, but you have to be proactive and really move on this.
No, I am.
So, yeah, so, I mean, otherwise, if you don't, if you're not prepared to come back, then, you know, you'd be carried again, because it would be even further out.
May I have a motion, please, to carry this?
So moved.
Second.
Where is it, August 6th? And you'll grant the board the extension to make the decision on August 6th, right?
Okay.
August 6th. There's a water fountain outside.
Okay. Application 25:03. Mr. O'Neill?
We would like to carry his application. Joseph O'Neill here, under District 37. We're not going to have witnesses for sure. We will carry the application.
Nora, please.
Well, um. October 8th.
And you'll grant the extensions? We'll grant all this to your extension. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Nora?
I apologize.
Berkowitz.
Yes.
DeCros.
Yes.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Greggiani.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
2456.
Application 25:03 Dean Marrar, 62 Upper Rainbow Trail, block 117, lot 29, zone R3, a C variance to legalize a patio contrary to section 430-35, columns 9 and 13.
Okay, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yeah, great, thanks. State your name and spell your last name, please.
Dean Marrar, M-A-R-R-A.
Have you seen the engineer's report from February?
Yeah. Have I seen?
The township engineer's report from February?
Uh, I saw everything that it was given, yes.
Does that include the February 24th, 2025 engineer's report?
I, I don't want to, I know on my record, so I don't want to say with certainty, but anything that this letter gave me, I looked at. So if it was given to me, I looked at it.
The town engineer would have sent it to you.
Then I did not see it.
Okay.
Okay. I have an extra copy.
Thank you.
Did you see here, were you present when we had the colloquy with the prior applicant?
Excuse me?
Were you present when we had the colloquy with the prior applicant?
The gentleman who owned the house, the woman?
The woman. Who was up here as an applicant seeking to build a deck when you were here.
Case to forth.
Oh, yes, I was.
You understand what took place, then?
She also, she also did not see the engineer's report, and we had to carry her case.
So. So what I just handed you is a report from the township engineer that indicates that your existing patio, since it's of a certain size, triggers potential stormwater management issues, which he indicates could be costly. So, and I know you're, you are here to legalize an existing patio, correct?
Correct.
So if you would like, the board will be amenable to carrying your application so that you can have a discussion with the township engineer about how you might address the concerns that he raised in his memo.
Okay. Yes, has, I know my existing patio is over some type of limit, where therefore I may need a. where therefore I may need a, a drainage system, I'm guessing? How is that, um, come to a conclusion that, yes, this patio on this said deck when needs this drainage system? Like, how does said person know?
Impervious coverage.
Engineer already wrote that in his report.
That, so he's been, he's.
He's the one who makes that decision.
Okay.
How did you get here?
Because I was notified, long story short, um, there was a fence. With code enforcement, so, uh, there was a, the short story is, there was a fence on my property for twenty-six years, through several owners. Before I got in the house, there was never a problem with the fence. But apparently, the previous owner of my house got a lot of people angry. However, he was never notified about the fence. I move into the house, I get three notices about a fence. The previous owner of the house messaged me on Facebook and said, I put the fence up twenty-six years ago, never heard anything about it. I get into the house, all of a sudden, the fence, which I knew about through the deed, which also brings up a lot of issues because of the deed in my house, when I agreed to.
You got here because code enforcement said you did something illegal.
Well.
But it was.
I didn't do anything illegal.
You bought the property as is with this patio.
Correct.
Okay, and you, didn't you do just to find out whether it complied or whatever?
Well, that brings up an issue.
I don't get it, I, I really don't, I think.
Well, just let me answer your question, could you answer that question so I may answer it?
What question?
You just said, you're here for.
Due diligence.
Due diligence.
If you, if your attorney had done due diligence, the issue of a variance would have come up, and any outstanding issues?
I, I tend to disagree because of something that happened on Memorial Day weekend, where it was known about the patio, and the, the, our LCC told me, we let you buy this house, even though we knew this patio, so it was already known that I bought this house.
But that's not our issue.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, your case is brought to us.
Okay.
Those facts don't matter, really, you're over, and we have to come to a resolution.
All right.
You need to get with the engineer, and I think, since it's built already, try to figure out a way where you're not ripping that up and trying to convince him that the water's not going elsewhere, is my suggestion.
Right, I think that everybody needs some type of validation and/or proof that, yes, this patio is causing X amount of runoff.
Well, that's going to be part of the case you're going to present to us.
Do you take, take some pictures and make sure?
Oh, I have pictures, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Nora, would you please give us a date to carry this application?
September twenty-fourth. September twenty-fourth.
Now, the only thing that, I'm a school teacher by day, um, household, all the time. Um, so, but the only thing is, if I'm saying September twenty-fourth, the only issue I may have is that may be my back-to-school night, I can't say with certainty, I'm a school teacher in Montpel, not Parsippany.
When would you know what back-to-school night is?
Um, when they release the calendar.
Is it always September?
Yes.
So if it was not, if we did this.
October, I can give you October eighth or October twenty-ninth.
I know, it's always in September, so.
So let's cancel September and give you an October date, please.
All right, uh, which were the two options on?
Eighth or twenty-ninth.
April or October?
Ten, October eighth or October twenty-ninth?
Um, uh, let's go for October eighth, ten eighth.
Okay.
And you'll grant the board all necessary extensions to decide, correct?
Excuse me?
You'll grant the board necess, the necessary extensions to decide the application on October eighth?
Uh, yeah.
We'll see you in October.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Application twenty-five colon twenty, Jigger Patwa, three fifty-nine North Westwood Road, block four eighty-four, lot one, zone R three. A C variance to construct a one-story foyer addition, two-story addition at rear, second-story addition over existing one-story, covered entrance with overhang element to office entrance, one-story covered porch to main dwelling, front stairs, air conditioning unit on concrete pad and driveway replacement, contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, columns ten and thirteen. Sir?
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great, state your name, spell your last name, please.
My name is Jigger Patwa. Uh, last name is spelled as P as a Peter, I, T as a Tom, S W A.
You consider.
The same thing, uh, yeah, engineering, engineering reports.
Yes, they're going to update it one, two, they can.
Yes, you saw the updated engineering report of July ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, and give us your professional background.
My name is Afzal Farid, last name is P A R I D, I'm a licensed chiropractor.
And you've been, you've been qualified by this board, correct?
Yeah.
And your license is in good standing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Come back, please.
Good evening, board members, and thank you for your time today. Um, eight years ago, we moved into this township with a small family, my daughter was the first grader starting, uh, with the Parsippany, uh, Lake Hurta Elementary School. And eight years later, my kids have been grown up, and our family feels that it's, could be kind of compromising with my son and daughter, uh, living in this house. And that's just why we're looking forward for this addition. On top of that, my parents are getting old, and I'm expecting them to stay with me, as considering that's a part of our culture. We always like to take care of our elderly parents, and with that small house, you know, with the house what we have, I think it will be a lot of compromise for my parents to live with us. At the same time, my daughter and my son have to compromise as well. So, and with that, all their needs, we decided that let's do some renovations so we can take care of our personal needs, uh, which respects my parents' needs as well as respect my growing-up kids, uh, because I don't want them to compromise while they're growing up. And that's just why we decided that let's make some renovation and additions to the property, uh, so it addresses all our needs. And that's the, uh, why, uh, that's the reason why we are here. Uh, and, um, I have, supported by Abhijit here, who is going to help you out with any technical requirements here.
One kitchen?
Yeah, one kitchen, that's how we grew up.
There's a picture on your, um, sign plan of the dwelling. Is that how it would look when it's done?
Yeah. Can I pass this around?
Please. That would be listed as A one.
How many pages is A one?
It's, uh, five pages.
Five pages of photographs?
Yeah.
Of rendering?
Rendering.
No page.
Uh, no, it's a five level, so, lower and upper.
Yeah.
And I noted that there's a, an elevator?
Yeah.
And is that for the grandparents to access the, the rooms upstairs?
Right.
It's natural material man-made.
I'm sorry?
Is that natural material decided, or is that man-made?
It's man-made, both, except for, I mean, brick. Yeah.
So what's the proposal?
Uh, so we're proposing a, so we're here for two variances, building and impervious. Uh, the building coverage right now is fourteen point eight percent, we're bringing it up to nineteen point one percent.
What was that number again?
Uh, fourteen point eight percent, and we're bringing it up to nineteen point one percent.
This is different than what's on the.
There's a discrepancy between, um, the letter that was sent out, I think she wasn't considering the overhang, and we were, so, like, if we're using, um, the revised numbers that were sent out, then it was fourteen point one.
So you have nineteen point one on your plan?
Yeah, we're showing nineteen point one.
Okay.
But for her calculations, uh, in our plans, we included S P overhang, but she didn't include that in hers.
Is that recorded? So what's the right number, eighteen point eight-three?
Yeah, it would be, hers would be eighteen point eight-three, that would be the right number.
Do they use that as a?
All right, so the information we have in front of us is good. Eighteen point eight-three and thirty-eight point five, uh, thirty-eight point eight-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me, currently, uh, to the left of the house, is that an office?
Yes.
And is that being used as an office now?
Yes.
For what?
It's a physical therapy office.
Okay, so that's going to stay, physical therapy there? But upstairs, you're wanting the use for your family?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, going back to the impervious, um, we're bringing up, uh, we're bringing it to eighteen, uh, thirty-eight point eight-five percent. Uh, it's only eight point two percent increase, uh, in impervious, it is a non-existing, uh, formity, instead of the oversized, um, driveway and parking lot for the physical therapy office. So we're proposing to mitigate, I mean, to cut down the building coverage, um, to offset it, we're, we're taking portion of that existing driveway and, um, parking lot house to, to make sure that the impervious doesn't go off as well.
But, but the numbers calculated takes that into consideration, correct?
Correct. So the existing house, currently on the, uh, lower level, there's a two-car garage, and as you walk in, there's a open area, they pulled, um, back, and a study area that they use as a work-from-home office currently. And on the left side of the house, currently, there is a, um, a physical therapy office, uh, used by Corby, uh, his wife. Um, and on the upper level, uh, there's a living, kitchen, and dining area, and on the right side of the house is where the bedroom wings are, uh, currently. And currently, uh, over the existing, um, uh, physical therapy office, there's no structure above that.
But when you say currently, you mean currently and continuing, correct?
Uh, we're proposing to add on top.
Right, but that use is going to stay?
Yes.
Yes.
Protectively, you have a two-story at home, correct?
Correct, two-story, uh, basically, yeah.
How much of the first floor is now the, uh, physical therapy?
So the physical therapy, uh, office currently is one thousand one hundred ninety-three square feet, and the proposed is going to be one thousand three hundred nine square feet. We're adding a small storage area from the existing house into the physical therapy, because they need a little bit more space.
How much square footage is there on the first floor?
That's what's there.
First floor and the.
The reason I'm asking this question, there's a limit to your home offices, and it's twenty-five percent of the first floor.
Um.
And I think you're over that.
The note that we read on, um, the ordinance was thirty percent. So the existing right now is forty-nine point two percent with the current, uh, square footage of the house. Uh, with the new square footage of the house, that's going to be brought down to twenty-five point eight percent.
You have used the total square footage, you don't use the first floor?
Uh, to, uh, for, it says for split levels include both the top and, um, bottom level, and not even.
Where are you reading that?
Uh, four thirty dash fifty-nine B.
Revised when?
Uh, I don't have that information.
Can you read that paragraph?
Professional home offices for one physician, surgeon, doctor, dentist, engineer, architect, or accountant residing on the premises, provided that the site fronts the street classified in the adopted master plan of Parsippany Township as other than local street, and provided that not, uh, but not more than one non-resident is employed in the connection with discretion, and, uh, further provided that professional home office is incidental to the residents with space to be used, where office under to thirty percent of the area of any floor. In computing, uh, the office, uh, space of split-level construction, the office shelf shall be limited to thirty percent of the first two levels. In pay, in no case shall, uh, the space used for garage be included in computing the.
Okay, so would you read that last?
What was that, I'm sorry, what was that section again?
Uh, four thirty dash fifty-nine B.
And you're saying you comply with that?
Yeah, we're bringing, current, existing is non-conforming with the new proposed additional square footage, we're going to be complying with that, that's going to be at twenty-five point eight percent.
And you only have one employee?
Yes.
And that won't be changing?
No.
And the use is one of the uses that you said?
It's a physician office.
Okay. So you, this used to be a chiropractor's office, Lou Renzo. Um, I believe, if you've been in the town, very much you must be his patient. He was an excellent chiropractor, and we were very fortunate to get his, and because when we were buying this property, we had a lot of interaction with him, and the only thing what he did was raise this town, and we were very happy that we moved into this house, and we are continuing his legacy there.
He's reading, um, the ordinance from the, uh, R two zone instead of.
The R three?
Yeah.
His zone.
Do you think it's saying about this?
I don't recall.
Yeah, you're, Nora's right, the section you read is for the R two zone, you're in the R three zone.
Yeah.
Well, now, in the R three zone, in four thirty dash sixty-seven, C, it says, professional home office, comma, subject to the conditions of four thirty dash fifty-nine B, which is what you read, and further provided that no such use shall be located on a lot of less than twenty thousand square feet in size.
Yeah, so that would be a non-compliant, existing non-compliance, because.
So how, how big is your lot?
Eighteen thousand five hundred.
Have we ever noticed this issue?
No, because.
Do we ever use this issue?
Well, it's a. Well, you're, you're, you're expanding the square footage of the pre, of the prior non-conforming use because you're adding some storage to that area, right?
Yeah, I mean, we can keep it the same and not, um.
It's an expansion, means it's an expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use.
So if he took out the storage.
This is a conditional use within the zone.
This is a conditional use within the.
And they're moving the.
They're in.
Until, right now, the, what you have in front of you is an expenditure of a non-conforming conditional use, that is a D variance.
Yeah, because they want to add square footage to that home office area.
If they. Do you know, when you bought this house, and when you did the, was there ever a board of adjustment action to approve the chiropractor's office?
Yes.
I know there was an action to reject one of his applications.
Okay, so one of the rejects.
But prior to that, he did get a, do we know what the regulations were in effect at that time?
So.
Probably not.
Okay, so, when I bought the property, it was this resolution that chiropractor office or professional use office can be operated out there with a single employee. And that's what we've been doing so far.
Okay.
I know there's a second resolution that was passed, that when he was going to rent a residential property, and he was going to continue to use the office space, and that was denied.
Right.
So we don't, we are not doing that, we all going to leave the property and continue to use the office.
What, I'm not trying to play lawyer, Bill was telling me to keep a mouth shut, but I, I think we need to have a notice for a expenditure.
You're expanding the pre-existing approval.
Right.
And you need that for your protection.
Yeah.
So that has nothing to do with the added space, that has to do with the usage?
Well, it does have to do with the added space.
Adding the, adding space onto that.
So if he didn't want to use that space, if he decided not to add that space, that would go away?
No.
It would not go away?
He's increasing the bulk of the building.
Okay, so no matter what.
Now he adds to it.
Yeah.
You're increasing the bulk of the building for the reasons you said, and forget about this storage space, whether it's part of your, uh, office practice or the storage space in the house. That doesn't get around the issue of expanding of a non-conforming use.
Do you have that prior resolution?
Yeah.
Not what you're talking about, you do have that prior resolution that approves the chiropractor?
Uh-huh. Mm-hmm. That's how the Lou Lorenzo added that office space, and that's how he was operating it. So when I bought this property, I made my own research and all the consultants before I moved in, because the only reason to buy this property was to, my wife can be at home when the kids come home from school, and so obviously, that was one of the reasons to buy the property.
And you had a location?
Right.
Can I get my- Because you have a great location?
Yeah, it's a great location.
Now, you understand that what we're discussing is nothing to do with the merits of your application.
Right.
It's just a procedural issue as to whether you properly noticed your neighbors and the public about what you were asking for.
Cause you're asking, right, for an addition in, in the appro, last approval, you're at, you're adding to the last approval, which was approved for the office. You're now adding over above it, and it has to be appropriately presented to your neighbors as well, for your protection as well as the board's.
So they'll just have to renotice, you think?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I think this is for your protection, isn't it?
I respect that.
Do you know, before you go, and while you're here, I'm not sure if Madam Chairman, you wanna ask any questions about the actual plans?
You have an open gym, and that is being used for?
The open gym are for the physical therapy, one of the modality of the, of the physical therapy equipment is to have them do some exercises, and this are all monitored by my wife while she is rendering the treatment. So when you call it an open gym, it's like open concept, where you have these all physical therapy, take exercise machines so that the patient can exercise on. This is not for the normal people or our non-patient to come in and work on. This is not for that.
Thank you. And you also have a proposed game area and a lounge?
Yeah, so we didn't knew what to do with that huge space right above our living space, so we called it an entertaining space for people. My son likes to play a lot of games, and he wanted to bring in a pool table. I said, "Okay, now we have this open space. You can use that for that." Uh, to be honest, um, we're pretty much, we're gonna leave on the upper floor. The lower floor is going to be, um, like, you know, just going to be my space and my son's space to have some man-time together. That's, that's, that's the whole purpose of it.
Are there any questions from the board? So he has to renotice, so he has to carry this?
You gotta, you gotta carry it, yep.
Okay.
Maybe I'll ask the other question. Is this, is this property owned as a LLC, or are you owning it your own?
No, I personally own it.
So you don't need to have a lawyer. You're here as an individual property owner.
Yes.
Okay.
Does it need a planner?
I think the architect could explain the function of the building now.
Fine. As long as you're okay with that.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, we have to carry your application, Nora. May we have a, a date, please?
Uh, um, October 29th.
And you understand the notice issue, right?
Right.
Will we be giving you a notice, or?
Yeah, you have to notice all.
You're gonna have to, I'm not gonna create a notice for a used variance, so you're gonna have to maybe consult with somebody on that while I'm providing percy.
Okay. But the notice is something that we prepare and then provide to you, or you review, or?
Well, you have to renotice and publish.
Right.
But yes, I, 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 I would need a copy of the notice just for the file.
I'm saying, like, we have to mail out.
Certified, um, and publication.
Nora tonight, of course.
May we have a motion, please?
Some move.
Second.
Just run a vice.
Need a motion, please?
Uh, some move.
Mr. Cross was first, then I seconded.
Thank you. Nora?
Uh, put this up, please. Berwick?
Somebody?
Yes.
Cro?
Yes.
Jackwood?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Freddie? Nope, he's not here. Bring on him.
Yes. Okay, we'll see you.
Uh, October 29th.
Yep.
October 29th.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we dismissed?
Motion to adjourn, please?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.
This is beauty, you call it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Santosh and I was told. But it's meant for love.
July 3rd.
Next year's, yeah.
Can you find that, uh, resolution that approved the chiropractic?
Uh, yes, I have my calendar. You never know.
Yeah, that's what I feel, you know?
Well, I guess the wife is not on board.
Well, the wife, isn't, isn't the wife, you have a copy?
Of the, um, the new proposed, I see, so I give you one yet, uh, in the end of the-
Twenty dollars.
Just that mine has a little office to do that one. Okay, so otherwise, if you wanted one, I'll give you one.
Really?
Not potentially. Yeah, I did, I did.
He didn't know, he didn't know he was on here, loving you.
No, I didn't know.
I do, I love you, man.
This is the traffic to the next meeting.
Send it to me if you want that, or when you're in the meeting.
And then just send me that resolution.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, Nora?
Oh, thank you.
Santosh and I were talking a lot about you.
You and I, right.
Okay. Nora, she's a bitch.
No.
Well, it's been so long, I'll probably get a watch of the video.
I just remember everyone coming up and just being, some of them are so obnoxious, some of them we couldn't understand, and that, that's-
For that one time.
Right, right after the beginning?
Oh, yeah.